Good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Owen. I am the president of the R E S C Edmonton Center. It's my honor to actually be the first, this is my first live hosting of a regular meeting. Our past president Jeff Robertson was the kindly stepped in for me when I was too old to do anything but be out in Zoom land with the rest of our Zoom landers. I'd like to say, welcome you all. And I'd like to say, first of all, that we are on Treaty Six land, which is the traditional land of the First Nations people, Métis people. And it was a traditional meeting place for them as well. Much better. That's easier. Okay. So I'm going to show the screen now and we'll put up the agenda. Can everybody see that in Zoom land? Just nod your head. Okay. All right. So this is the agenda for tonight. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Sharon, thank you. A seconder? Jeff, thank you. All in favor? Carried. Don't have to say I when you're in person. Isn't that great? So we're going to move next to the, to the minutes. Is Sukrit with us in Zoom land? Has anybody seen her? Okay, so we're going to do three sets of minute approvals tonight. We have June, September, and October. They've been posted on the OneDrive. So we'll start with the June minutes. Are there any additions or changes to the June minutes? Seeing none, I'll ask for a mover for adoption of the minutes of the June regular meeting. Orla? Seconder? Kent, thank you. All in favor? Suddenly, it's very hard to see everybody. Carried. Then we have the September minutes. Are there any additions or changes to the September minutes? None? Can I get a mover for the September minutes? Murray? Seconder? Larry? All in favor? Carried. And thank you, Abder, for putting, raising your hand. Now we'll do the October minutes. Are there any changes or additions to the October minutes? None? Can I get a mover for the October minutes? Josephine? Seconder? Joanne? Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Okay. Well, that was epic. We're now going to, I'm going to ask Dr. Sharon Morrison to do the introduction of our featured speaker tonight. Sharon?
Okay, hello. It gives me great pleasure to welcome Greg Sivikoff to the stage here today and to actually talk here live. This is not the first time that Greg has spoken here. He first came to the University of Alberta as an assistant professor in 2011. So he's had his 10 year anniversary here and he's spoken a few times here for meetings here. He's, Greg specializes in studying the remnants of stars after they've died. And so this includes white dwarfs, neutron stars, and black holes. But I did a little looking at his papers and I've got to say, I think his papers are very much dominated by black holes. He's studied supermassive black holes at the centers of galaxies as well as smaller black holes that are in binary star systems. And that is one of the things that he does specialize in. Something else that you might not know is a different skill of his. Oh, I'm just looking over here. This is probably Greg's PhD thesis over here, which is a supermassive black hole in the center of a giant galaxy. And so he spent a fair bit of time working on this. But some of you might know that in astronomy, people use very silly acronyms for the names of their collaborations or their new computer codes or anything. One of the things that Greg is actually very skilled at is coming up with those silly acronyms. And I'm hoping he's going to tell us about some of them today. So it looks like we've got many types of technology that are actually working here now. So I'm going to let you take it on.
Well, I'd like to thank you very much for having me here back at Telus. It's a great to be here as a speaker again after several years of, as everyone's calling it now, Zoom land. Tonight, I'm more than honored to talk to you guys about some of the new golden eyes for the infrared skies that we've basically been gifted with in astronomy with the successful launch of the JWST mission. So I'd like to acknowledge I do most of my research and my science communications from here on Treaty Six territory, which are the traditional gathering places for many diverse indigenous peoples. And basically that this is not just a place that is a historic place, but this is actually an ongoing place where there are many languages and cultures that continue to influence our vibrant community. One of the things I like to think about astronomy is that in some ways, I think astronomy is one of the oldest ventures that we have as humans. So what you're seeing on this image right here, if we can maybe bring down the lights a little bit in the auditorium. Beautiful. Thank you. This is actually an astronomical observatory. Not only is it an astronomical observatory, it is the world's oldest astronomical observatory. Would someone in the audience, in the auditorium at least, like to give a guess about how old this is? Shout it out. 6,000 years is the guess. I'd love to say that it's 6,000 years old, but I'd be lying. It's older. This is actually from about 7,500 BCE. This is Naftal Plia in southern Egypt. So almost from the beginnings of recorded history and probably before that even, in some ways, mankind has been performing astronomical observations. These observations not only form important parts of our timekeeping as was done in that observatory, but it's also been the origin of cosmologies, entire ways in which different diverse peoples explain the universe around them. So this is some of the constellations from Kree nations, thanks to Wilford Buck for putting these together. And there are many stories of creation throughout these skies. As a modern scientist, we too tell stories of creation through the lens of science. So we have our own version of cosmology of how the universe began in a big bang, the first remnants of which we can see from the cosmic microwave background. And through the years since then, we actually get different versions of the universe seen at different distances from us. So from the very furthest distances where we see the cosmic microwave background, through the dark ages where unfortunately we don't see much, to when the universe begins to be made of both ions and neutral material once again in the era of reionization, to the formation of galaxies. So the stories we call cosmology are not just stories that are on entire universe scales. They're also stories slightly smaller on the scales of individual stars. So a very important part of astronomy is understanding the life cycles of stars. How stars begin in clouds of gas that collapse. They live their lives as stars balancing gravity with nuclear pressure or with pressure from nuclear conditions in the cores. Eventually, you run out of fuel, you go into an expanded phase as a red giant or a blue supergiant, so red supergiant, either of those three. And then gravity takes over when the fuel is quenched and you have basically the deaths of stars. As Sharon said, I like to study the stellar undead, basically when some of these dead stars actually get to have a second lease on life, some of these white dwarfs, black holes, and neutron stars, when they have a nearby neighbor. But it turns out that during the late lives of stars and during the death events, sort of the stellar screams that are supernova, they actually put material back into the interstellar medium for a next generation of stars to form. And so we have this cosmic cycle going on of birth, death, and rebirth. And you can bring this down to even a scale of entire solar systems and talking about how planets form, how you combine gas, rock dust, ice, and lots of gravity that you eventually get a collapse. As you collapse, I apologize for that intermittent blackouts. As you collapse, you start to spin rapidly, flatten into discs, and then dust and ice begins to collect, forming protoplanetary, protoplanetary, basically planetessibles, mini planets. These planetessibles grow, forming planets. And then depending on how close you are to the sun, you may be able to grow gas onto your planets, becoming huge gas giants. Or you may only be close to the suns and only be able to form terrestrial rocks like we're on. And you're eventually left with these exoplanets. And we've actually been quite fortunate in astronomy in the last two decades. In this picture where we are forming out of these rings of dust, they, when you start collecting the planetessibles together, you form gaps in these discs. And with the Autakama Large Millimeter Array, we've actually been able to image the disk of many protoplanetary systems. And when it's not flickering, you'll be able to see that you could actually see these gaps inside these discs, very much in line with what we think is going on. But we can go a step even further. And it turns out we are now undergoing a revolution of exoplanets. So back when I first started astronomy, and many of you started astronomy, we knew of nine planets, maybe eight planets, depending on who you talk to. Up to this point, in the last 20 or so years, we've now basically found over 6,000 exoplanets. There are more planets outside our solar system that we know now than we probably ever imagined we'd be able to know by this point. And so what we see here is actually an image by the Long Binocular Telescope. And this image, actually you can see four dots around a smudge in the middle. The smudge in the middle is because we're trying to block out light from the bright star that these four planets are orbiting around. But this is right now a picture of another solar system. And I find this stuff absolutely incredible. On the other end of thinking about these, the stories of how the universe forms, astronomy is also very interested in what's the most extreme stuff you got out there? And virtually nothing beats a black hole when it comes to this. This, of course, is a picture from the movie Interstellar. This is an intermediate mass black hole called Gargantua. In the movie, it was actually based on real science going into this artistic rendering. What you're seeing is you're actually seeing the disk around one of these black holes. And the black hole is got such a strong gravity that it is actually bending space and time. So you're seeing the back end of the disk folded above and below the disk. So the thing that looks like an O is not actually the, is not actually in that plane. It's the backside of this object. And we've gone from science fiction to science fact in some ways with the first images by the Event Horizon Telescope of a black hole shadow. And so this image here is showing that shadow that you see in the previous image. Obviously, we're not getting the disk around there for a couple of reasons. But we're seeing these shadows and we're even now able to understand how things like magnetic fields are structured in the supermassive black holes, both in our own galaxy and in one nearby galaxy. This is absolutely incredible work that's going on. If you go from the supermassive end, you go to the end of stellar massive objects I've already talked about, the black holes that are the stellar undead. Now, this is nice because as much as the supermassive black holes are wonderful to look at, they evolve on relatively long time scales. And the last time I checked, my graduate students don't want a million year thesis. Fortunately, the stellar mass black holes evolve on much more rapid time scales. And they will go through bursts of activity as the accrete material from a nearby star. And that material changes its behavior to suddenly collapse onto the black hole at the center of the disk in this image. Occasionally, these discs, the center of the black hole outside the event horizon, will actually launch these radio jets that are some of the things that I personally study. But they're absolutely incredible because now when you just see these things, we're at the beginning of being able to actually study really extreme physics with these. So this is a movie that was part of one of my collaborations. I'll give you the acronym afterwards. And this is actually a movie of real data that you're seeing here. And this was data taken over four hours and you're watching these jets launch sort of these little burps ballistically out. And what we saw is that these burps were actually changing the direction in which they were coming out. And why was this so interesting? Well, the black hole itself can't do the wobbling. So instead, some object around the black hole must be wobbling, sort of like a top wobbles, redirecting the jets. And we now understand that this inner disk that is slightly inclined is likely due to an effect that has to do with the actual black hole itself. The black hole is dragging spacetime around with it. So in astronomy, we're interested not just in the big stories, but also these sort of extreme stories. And it turns out that the big stories and these extreme stories are actually linked. So this is an image of a supermassive black hole. In red, you see the jets of material out. In blue, you see very hot gas, millions of degrees Kelvin. And what you might be able to see is that there are holes in the blue gas. And those holes are filled with the red radio jets. The jets are blowing bubbles in this inner cluster medium. And you might go, oh, cool, we're blowing bubbles. What's the big deal? Well, this blowing the bubbles is the most energetic event, I put in quotes, since the Big Bang. It took 10 million years. So calling it an event is an astronomical stretch. But the sheer amount of energy deposited as we blow these bubbles is absolutely mind boggling. And it turns out, and I promise this is the only, this is one of the few graphs I'll show. This is the only one that doesn't involve JWST. On the, this graph, on the left axis, the vertical axis, we're seeing the mass of black holes in a way in which you're seeing masses of black holes stretching from millions of masses of the times our sun up to tens of billions. On the Y axis, we're looking at the speed of stars well away from the black hole. Now, there's no reason that these stars should know about that black hole. But you can see that there is a clear correlation between the stars and the black hole. Somehow, stars and galaxies know that there's a black hole at their center. And what happens nowadays is we actually believe that the supermassive black holes and galaxies co-evolve. So the very story of how we got here, this important human story, depends on black holes. How do we like to study this? For the most part, astronomers use the electromagnetic spectrum. It's not the only thing we use, but since I'm here to talk to you about JWST, obviously, I'm going to focus on the electromagnetic spectrum. Light that we're used to seeing is just one part of electromagnetic spectrum, the visible spectrum. Many of us have seen absolutely gorgeous images taken by the Hubble Space Telescope. Until recently, we didn't have a world-class infrared mission that was as big as the Hubble Space Telescope. We used to have the Spitzer Space Telescope, which was a slightly smaller mission that gave us a very infrared view. But we didn't have a really, it was a world-class observatory, don't get me wrong. But we didn't have the sort of premier, oh, my God, observatory that we have now. So the electromagnetic spectrum stretches from the highest frequencies, the smallest waves, the highest energies in the gamma regime, through X-rays to the ultraviolet, to the violet, blue, you know, backwards of the origin, to the red, to the infrared, onto the microwave and the radio. Now, why does this electromagnetic spectrum matter? Well, one of the reasons why it matters is it turns out that the light that we see can actually change on the way to us. And because the universe is expanding, light actually can get redder the farther away it is from us in an event that we call red shifting. And so the very expansion of space is leading to light being red shifted. So let's say you study the local universe with the Hubble Space Telescope and you want to study galaxies like you're seeing now, but in the early universe. They have to be very far away. They're very far red shifted. So you're going to need an infrared instrument. Now, that's not the only reason we use infrared. This image here on the left shows you a visible image of the Milky Way. Now, the center of the Milky Way, despite it being called Milky, is actually visibly dominated by dark dust clouds that prevent us from seeing most of the Milky Way. But one of the nice things about infrared light is it cuts through the dust a lot. And so on the Y axis here are the same region of sky, you're seeing the infrared image. And yes, there's still dust that's making this image not as clear as it possibly could be. But you're really seeing much more of the galaxy that way. So one of the basic premises of the JWST is we want to look at the first stars, the first galaxies, and we want to cut through and look at areas that would otherwise be hidden. And so this is a wonderful little graphic that sort of summarizes a lot of different science areas that are very hot in astronomy now and that JWST is focusing on. Things like galaxies, like the little spiral galaxy in the center, supermassive black holes, like the object in the lower right, planets like you see in the upper right, a whole bunch of different objects. And this is why we built JWST. Okay, I've lost my transitions. Back to the electromagnetic spectrum. Sorry. If you can see, from Hubble Space Telescope, we got out a teeny bit into the near infrared. From the Spitzer Space Telescope, we got out further into the infrared, but we didn't connect with the Hubble Space Telescope. So the JWST was designed to gap from the red parts of the visible spectrum all the way up to mid-infrared. And once we had there, we developed a suite of instruments. Most of the instruments are focused on the near infrared, trying to understand the different energies of photons that are coming in with spectrographs or taking beautiful images with cameras and sometimes doing a little bit of both with the same instrument. In the mid-infrared, we also have an instrument that's doing some of the same things. You'll see these near spec, nearest and near cam or MIRI acronyms throughout JWST press releases. So one of the reasons we built JWST is we wanted a bigger mirror. Why did we want a bigger mirror? Well, your ability to collect light is directly proportional to the area of your mirror. So if you're going to study these objects that are hard to see, you want to collect as much light as possible. The other thing is, once you're going to space, things get expensive already. So astronomers in the late 90s and early 2000s started to think big with the design for the James Webb Space Telescope. Now, why did I say we have to go into space? Well, it turns out that the electromagnetic spectrum is not always easily visible from the ground. So what we're used to seeing, the optical part of visible light, of course, penetrates easily to the ground. It turns out that radio waves also penetrate easily to the ground. But if you want to study other bits of the electromagnetic spectrum, whether it's gamma rays, X-rays, ultraviolet, or even parts of the infrared, you have to go high. Now, sometimes you can get away going to the very highest mountains, but most of the times you have to go even higher than that. NASA recently retired one observatory, Sofia, which was an infrared observatory. Literally, we took a 747, cut a hole in it, put a telescope in that hole, and this plane would fly around taking observations. Not the cheapest thing to run. And thus, one of the reasons it's no longer running. But if you really want to get good infrared data, you go to space where you join some of the other missions like Hubble, like Chandar X-ray Observatory. Now, if we're going to go to the infrared, we have to think carefully. And if we're going to go to space, we have to think carefully. We wanted to build big mirrors. The problem with big mirrors weigh a lot. And the more something weighs, the harder it is to get into space. It just costs lots and lots of money. So people thought very, very intelligently. And they decided that we're not just going to make the mirrors from normal materials that you would make in your own backyard. So most of the mirrors are made primarily of beryllium, not exactly a common material. And then as if beryllium wasn't enough to make this an asset of mirrors, beryllium isn't nearly reflective enough. So we coated the whole instrument with gold. So actually microscopic layers of gold to make the JWST mirrors. This is why I call them our new golden eyes. And so these are six of the JWST hexagonal patterns that make up its distinctive design. And in the center here, you can see a person for scale. Now, this gives you some sense of scale, but the entire instrument scale is actually hard to fathom without more pictures. One of the other things we're going to need to do is it turns out that infrared is very good at picking up hot objects. The problem is your telescope backend, your satellite, the very Earth itself can be hot. So you need to block that light. So in addition to these mirrors, we decided that we need to have these basically kite-like shields that are solar shields blocking a lot of the transmission. And you can see, start to see some of the scale of JWST from the number of people lined around that mission. But in order to also be able to see things through this heat, we needed to get a little bit away from the Earth. And so we flew to an area where we haven't flown nearly as many missions as things like HST, which orbits around the Earth. So instead, JWST is in orbit around the sun at a position which is a sort of gravitational equilibrium point with the Earth and the sun called a Lagrangian point. And the nice thing about this is that we can sort of make sure that, you know, we're far away from everything, we're in shadows as much as we can, we don't have to worry about the sun, we don't have to worry about, about seeing daylight from the Earth. JWST was a big upgrade from Hubble. To give you a sense for scale again, the Hubble Space Telescope, as it's constructed here, minus some of the booms that are extending out, fits roughly in the envelope of a school bus. So JWST isn't nearly as compact. It's bigger than that school bus and it's got a lot more interesting parts going in different directions. And the mirror, as you can see, is so large that we didn't just decide to make the mirror out of one bit of material. Matter of fact, we really can't. And we had to make the mirror out of different segments of a mirror to basically get our, build up our big, large mirror. Again, I'm big on understanding the scale of JWST because it's really just hard to put your mind around. So one of the things prior to launch that many science outreach people did is they put real scale, one-to-one scale models of JWST in some parks across the world. JWST is a monster. But of course, you don't launch your monster like this into space. Instead, it's got to fit in a rocket. It's got to be nice and gift wrapped. So when we launched JWST, it was in this folded form that you see here. This means that to deploy JWST was a non-simple affair. This was the video that scared most astronomers to death prior to the successful deployment of JWST. This was the video that scared most astronomers to death prior to the successful deployment of JWST. And if you watched how complicated this is, you'll begin to get a sense of why we were so scared. All the agencies that make satellites told us, trust us, we know we can do this. How do you know that? We can't tell you. Trust us. So first things you have to do is you have to deploy your solar arrays that are going to collect some energy. Next, we want to deploy our, the pallet that holds the shields, the shields. I apologize for that. I'll stop bawling around. Then we actually moved the instrument up a little bit. There are these momentum flaps that are used to do some correction of the instrument's orientation. There was a cover across the, across the solar shields that we had to release, and then we had to extend out these booms perpendicular to the craft. That in itself was scary. You know, you didn't want anything to possibly go wrong with that. And then attention to them. And if that's not enough, now we've got the bus, we've got the shield in place, we've got to get the telescope put together. We deploy the secondary mirror. We deploy our radiators, and we fold out the rest of the primary mirrors. So JWST getting to space was, was the first problem. Deploying in space was a whole set of concerns. And thank God, it went beautifully, better than we could ever have expected. But it's not just, you know, getting it out there and folding everything. When you unfold an instrument like that, you know that it's not going to be finely tuned. So the next thing we had to do is we actually had to tune the instrument. So this is a little bit of a clip I'll show of how that tuning went.
And to get there, we went through a process. Well, we did the segment identification, and then we formed the image array. And then, once they were in the image array, we used this phase retrieval technology to position each of the mirror segments and the secondary mirror itself such that all the optical aberrations were effectively eliminated. We tilt the mirror segments to bring the light from each mirror so that it falls on top of each other at a common point in the middle of the detector. And we call that image stacking. And that concentrates all the light in a single place, but the images, the segments themselves are not cooperating. They're not working together at that point. They're all their own individual telescope. And the next phase in the process is something we call coarse phasing. And that's where we adjust, well, literally, it's the piston, it's the up and down motion of the mirror segments relative to each other. We control the piston of the segments so that they all come together in creating a complete monolithic primary mirror. If you know exactly what the shape of that telescope is, and you know exactly how the light is falling on your detector, it turns out that you can prove, you can actually prove mathematically that that is enough information to tell you exactly what you need to do to that telescope to fix the alignment errors. And why do we know this? We know this because of something called a pupil imaging lens. And this allows us to take a picture of the primary mirror of the telescope. People have referred to it as a selfie. Well, that's, that's what it is, actually, but that's really important mathematically. Now, there's a catch, however. Just because you know a solution to something exists does not automatically give you that solution. And that is the difficult part. That's what we've spent 20 years working out. It's highly mathematical, uses something called Fourier analysis. But that's what we do is we tease out those solutions and we find what we need to do to each optical element to achieve perfection.
So after a lot of work, tremendous amount of effort, over $10 billion, euros and Canadian dollars all combined, JWST got perfectly aligned and it released its first images to the public. And so what we're seeing here now are some of those first images. And in particular, of, these are absolutely gorgeous images of stellar nurseries, for instance, in this one, in the Crab Nebula. Nurseries where stars are forming, dust is blocking light, but the infrared is cutting through that. We're seeing reflection emission. It's absolutely gorgeous stuff. And in fact, beyond the images that you actually see most of the time in the press, we took lots of these images, so not your standard three-color image with three different filters, but they even put together images with seven different filters together to give you these unheralded views of what are going on in the stellar nebula. But we also took this opportunity to rethink how we do some of our visualization and communication to the public. And of course, not everyone can actually hear quite well, or sorry, can see quite well. And so people wanted to come up with ways to sonify images. So they worked with, between scientists and sound engineers to actually come up with sonifications of some of these initial images. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask the microphone to be muted here. And hopefully, we'll be able to play some of these sonifications. So the challenge, of course, with these sonifications is coming up with a way to communicate what's going on when there's so much complex things going on just visually and compressing that basically to audio where you just have intensity, some of the timbers of the sounds and frequencies. We'll be hearing some more sonifications throughout the talk. We didn't just look at where, where stars are born, we also looked where stars died. This is a planetary nebula. When a star like our own sun dies, it will expel a lot of its outer material and may form one of these planetary nebula where it's being, there's shining going on from a star in the center of this image that is about the mass of the sun, but the size of Earth, a white dwarf. And these two different images here are both images from JWST with different filters. And you can see how you get a ton of different information by looking at the different filters, to the point where you can actually see the white dwarf and another nearby star quite clearly in the image on the right. So they've also sonified these pair of images. Now, we're at the beginning of the age of sonification, but these are wonderful different tools we have of expanding the reach of astronomy and JWST in particular. Of course, this all began with an image that was so stunning that the President of the United States decided that he was going to break the embargo himself and publish one of the images a day earlier. And this is not something you say no to. So what happens is, one day before the official press release, the President had his own press release where they released this one image. This is an image of a cluster of galaxies. Most of the white extended images you see in here are individual galaxies somewhat like our own Milky Way. There's a huge massive cluster, and with clusters are lots of dark matter. And then what you wind up getting is you wind up actually getting this dark matter acting like a lens, much like the supermassive black hole was able to bend space and time and see light behind it. And you actually get these curved images called gravitational lenses from galaxies well behind the galaxy cluster. So we can zoom in on parts of this image. There's just incredible amount of detail here. And so you can see that there are these sort of linear streaks that look orangish. Those are individual galaxies that are getting stretched out because of the gravitational lens. But you're actually seeing sometimes multiple copies of the same galaxy or even be able to use the telescope almost like its own observatory to see different parts of these galaxies that you otherwise wouldn't be able to see. So again, the seeing the unknown that JWST opens us up. Part of this unknown includes things like supermassive black holes. So here's a picture of Stephane's quintet, which is something that many people here probably tried to observe. With Stephane's quintet, it actually involves four galaxies that are all somewhat related to each other and one interloper, which is why it became a quintet and not a quartet. But one of the great things is by looking at with infrared, we were actually able to reveal a supermassive black hole in one of the members of those four galaxies. But what I think is some of the coolest stuff that is going on, despite my love of black holes, is what's going on with planets. So we're used to thinking about eclipses on Earth. We just had a lunar eclipse where the Sun, oh God. You can tell it's Monday. So we just had a lunar eclipse, and with all these eclipses, you get shadows because one object is blocking the light from another object. So when this occurs, it's gray on Earth, but you can actually see these eclipses for planets in systems well away from us. And as an object goes, as an object goes around the star, and it goes in front of the star, it starts to block off light, eventually blocking off all the light in a, what's called a planetary transit light curve. And you learn tons of information from these transit light curves. So we've gotten now information from imaging, we've gotten some time series data. What most science gets done these days is not with those, as pretty as those are, it gets done with spectra. And the way spectra work is you can think of a prism breaking up light. When you look at an object like an old incandescent light bulb, you get a continuous spectrum. If you look at an object like a light emitting diode without a filter on it, or if you look at a certain fluorescent lamp, you'll get emission line spectrum because there you have very hot gas. And the hot gas gives you very specific lines of certain molecules and atoms. That gas, if it's in front of an object, can actually absorb light as well. And so sometimes you see very dark lines. So if you've ever been able to take a, see a spectrum of the sun, you see a whole bunch of these dark lines as well. And there are tons of information you get. So there are tons of different ways in which spectroscopy is used on JWST. But with the transits, one of the cool things that you can do is you can measure spectroscopy as the planet goes in front of the star. You're now basically having light going through the atmosphere of the planet, and so you're able to look at the composition of other planets' atmospheres. And so this is the other image which they were brave enough to release because you don't see a lot of press releases with, with spectra. But the reason why this is so cool is this spectra showing the amount of light blocked, so it's the inverse of an absorption spectrum. And you're seeing a whole bunch of wiggles in the spectrum where you predict water lines should be. The water lines are what makes it very difficult to do infrared astronomy from the ground. And they actively absorbed in these planets, so you can actually tell that in the atmospheres of some of these planets, there is, in fact, water. And they even made sounds of this. And that makes a lot more sense if you actually invert the image like it's supposed to be. It gets quiet at the high parts of this image because that's where the light is maximally blocked. But you're starting to see things like water in planets. We can actually see things by looking at the different amount of starlight that's getting blocked. And we can see that there's not just water, but there's carbon dioxide in some of these planet atmospheres. And we're entering this real revolution of this transmission spectroscopy of planets, which, if I had to guess, that's going to be the lasting legacy of JWST. Because as cool as all the galaxy stuff is, nothing hits home more like a planetary type observation. Now, this deep field image, they did some spectroscopy as well. It turns out that one of the reasons we do spectroscopy is because different chemicals have different fingerprints in, in their spectral responses. And so we can tell when we see multiple lines of an object that corresponds to neon, that there's some neon, some oxygen, some hydrogen, like we just did with the water. And you cannot just see the different spectrums, but you can see that these spectra might be slightly red-shifted or blue-shifted because they're moving relative to us. You can do things like look for the fact that there are, in some of these arcs, two emission lines at exactly the same positions and wavelengths, which means these objects are the same redshift away from us, which means they're the same distance. So we can see this arc is actually the same object seen multiple times. In Stephane's quintet, we were actually able to go to that galaxy which revealed the supermassive black hole, and we're able to see that by the center of the galaxy where the supermassive black hole is, the spectral response is very different from farther away from the black hole. So we're starting to see the things that black holes are either affecting or potentially even eating themselves. And we can see the different molecules like hydrogen, ion items, atomic hydrogen, molecular hydrogen, all these different things. And we can actually map these out in some of these galaxies. It's a treasure trove of information that we're just beginning to unlock. Now, I had hoped to be able to talk to you guys about some of the data I'm collecting with JWST, or at least one of my collaborations. It's not the Jackpot Collaboration, the Jet Acceleration and Collimation Probe of transient X-ray binaries that showed that processing jet, but it's a related collaboration. We just call ourselves JWST Jets. We weren't nearly as inventive. And we were planning to observe the jets of one of these black hole X-ray binaries of always stellar and dead to actually see very close to the black hole what the behavior of the jet was and how it was varied. We actually had an observation done by JWST. They pointed at the wrong object. This happens. So we'll get new data later on in the year, but I can't share with you my own data. What I can share is one of the other professors at University of Alberta, Professor Rosalowski, and you should get him here if you're, if you already have him scheduled. And his collaboration is looking at some of the nearby galaxies with JWST. This is showing an observation by them with HST. This is, I believe, is this the Whirlpool Galaxy? I can't remember which galaxy this is. I apologize. No, it's not the Whirlpool. Which one? It is the southern one. I just can't remember which one it is. So here we have a galaxy in typical of visible, and you can see all these dust lanes, but you also see some of the spiral arcs. There's lots of blue light in the spiral arms saying that there's some hot young stars there, but we don't get a real good view of what's going on in terms of the stars are forming because there's so much dust. So by looking in infrared, instead, you see something like this, exact same location. I can't even begin to understand all the work they're going to have to do to understand this. But you're seeing all the, you're seeing a lot of the young stars, you are seeing some areas where the dust is glowing, where the dust is hot enough that you can see it in the reddest filters of JWST. You're resolutely revealing a lot of the star formation areas, and they're going to have a lot of work to compare this with other traces of star formation along the entire electromagnetic spectrum. Now, all of them are nearly as complicated as these. This, I believe, is part of, I want to say M33, the Triangle Galaxy, but I could be incorrect. My brain is having a little bit of a meltdown right now. But you can see that these images of star, stellar nurseries But you can see that these images of star, stellar nurseries and of star formation on galaxies, absolutely incredible. And with that, I think I probably overspayed my welcome a little bit. So I'll open it up to any questions. All right, perhaps we should go online for a question first, since everyone in the audience has me for a little bit longer, I'll do an online question first. Well, there was one question I saw, is there a website with the signification? And yes, there is a website. I don't remember which one I went to offhand, but JWST has a entire website where they have all their information online. And I basically purposely stole as many of the images I could from that website so that you can go on there yourself and see some of the same exact things we saw there. Perhaps is there another question online, put in the chat? Okay, sorry, we've got a question in the audience.
Thank you so much for the fantastic talk. It was really interesting. I was wondering, do you have a sense of what the observations will show in regards to formation of the heavier elements greater than lead? So you have, you know, not just gold, but platinum and cadmium, bismuth, tellurium, all the rest. Are there, is it, are you leaning towards supernova formation or black hole or neutron star collision for those?
So this is a fairly complicated question that let me break down a little bit for the audience. So inside stars, we actually form all the heavy material essentially in our universe, except for a little bit that was created at the beginning of the big day. So most of what you and I are, well, that's not true because there's so much hydrogen in us, a lot of what you and I are, at least what makes you and I special, are actually basically was generated in stars, recycled through that feedback cycle. And some of the elements are very easy to understand how they're made, and some of the elements are a little bit harder. So there's a set of elements that are called R process elements, which are some of the elements that were referred to here, where we're currently trying to figure out how were they made. And several years ago, we got a hint of how they were likely made in that you could have two neutron stars merging together. This neutron star merger creates a basically a supernova-like event, and we call them kilonovas. And we thought that a large fraction of these R process elements, things like gold, for instance, were made in these neutron star mergers. People have gone back and they're doing calculations and there's an ongoing fight in the community. Is it neutron star mergers? Is it neutron star mergers plus something else? I have a general rule in astronomy. In astronomy, when you're given option A or option B, the answer is yes. So my guess is what's going on is there are a bunch of stuff going on in both processes. JWST itself is not necessarily the most adept instrument at responding to kilonova. It was, it can respond to weird events going on, but it doesn't do it well vis a vis our recent failure. But it's probably not the primary instrument that you're going to use to study this. You're probably going to be looking at some of the surveys that are looking at the sky repeatedly, over and over again, to identify some of these kilonova, looking at gravitational wave events that are going to be coming online when the gravitational wave collaboration starts its next run. And I'm hoping that we'll get a lot more answers there. So unfortunately, JMC, I don't think is going to give us the answer here, but it's a great Let's see, is there a question online? All right, so Brian Noble asked, what is the biggest takeaway from all this? If I have to say, I think the biggest takeaway is think big. I will be honest, I wasn't JWST's biggest cheerleader for the last, you know, 15 years. I was very concerned that it cost a lot of money and that something was going to happen and that if that did, astronomy was going to be in a really dark place. But a lot of people had the bravery to think big and say, look, if this goes off, it's going to be absolutely unbelievable. We have some idea of what we're going to get, but we always know in science, especially in astronomy, that it's the unknown that's going to surprise us. And if you think big, you really have a better chance of capturing that unknown. So I will occasionally be accused of thinking not so big, but that's my biggest takeaway. JWST was an incredible endeavor. It is the most expensive astronomy instrument to date by a mile, and it's worth it. Okay, I'll go on in audience.
Is there already planning for what comes after JWST?
So the question is, is there already planning for what comes after JWST? Well, one of the reasons why astronomers are very good at thinking big is we undergo long-term planning processes. JWST came out of these decayed long planning processes, we call it decadal surveys, and was recommended for several decadal surveys as being the primary project for that decade. We delivered it a little late, but we have these visions. So right now NASA is thinking about what the next steps are in its biggest missions. And it has put a call out for several different missions. There are some missions that are basically going for a optical telescope whose size would dwarf JWST. There are some that are going for X-ray telescopes that will give us incredible precision, or infrared telescopes that will tell us about star formation going on, not just in the mid-infrared, but in the far infrared. These are all going to go undergo a competition. At most, probably one of these is going to be selected, and then by the time I retire, maybe a little longer. There was another question online, will JWST help us with the search for Planet Nine? So what this is referring to is, of course, there are eight known planets in the solar system. There are many dwarf planets. And people think that there might be an object that could classify as a planet and not a dwarf planet in the outer solar system. Now, so the question is, will JWST help? It is possible that JWST will help, but if anything, it will be one of the last instruments to look at Planet Nine, because the hard part is identifying where Planet Nine will be. And if you're going to the very distant universe, not distant universe, distant part of the solar system, you basically have to look across the entire ecliptic to find where Planet Nine would be, and we don't have a really good sense. JWST looks at very minuscule parts of the sky. So it is not the primary instrument you use to go hunting for something, as in, I think it's vaguely over here. You go, I know it's over here somewhere, but I've got a very specific location, basically sort of the distance of a, probably a hair's width at about, probably at about a football field, about 100 meters, which would be about 100 arc second-ish, is probably how close you need to be for finding the object to look at it with JWST. I am sure if someone has a good candidate, they sure as heck are going to look at it with JWST, because the object should be a fairly cold object, it's in the distant solar system, but JWST would be able to pick up its thermal emissions quite well. All right, I know that we have other parts of the medium, so I don't want to go too long, but to stop me when you guys are happy.
Is JWST supplying any information, any data that'll help with the definition of what dark matter is?
So the question about dark matter. Oh boy, um, yes, oh, and no. So I say yes, because if you look at that gravitational cluster, oh, sorry, the galactic cluster that's acting as a gravitational lens, all that's occurring because of dark matter. So yes, we'll be studying a dark matter, but I think the primary question we have in astronomy when it comes to dark matter is the same question that particle physicists have. What the heck is dark matter? And I really think that astronomy is not going to be greatest at getting at what the heck dark matter is. We've done our jobs right now of saying what it isn't. And we've largely gotten rid of all the things that we can really get fairly well. The next types of things that, you know, we need to get rid of would be black holes that are less massive than the moon, but bigger than, more massive than mountains. And JWST isn't quite the instrument to do, to go after that. There's also some very interesting things that are going on. For instance, there are some recent galaxies that have been found that have been nearly 100% dark matter. This was found with telescopes that are completely different designed to JWST, rather than something really, it's not to say it's not complicated, but essentially it's a bunch of cameras all in an array, and it's called Dragonfly. And it's actually a Canadian instrument, and Dragonfly is doing some great stuff with dark matter. So the reason why Dragonfly works really good is it's really good at picking up low surface brightness information. JWST can do that, but JWST isn't best for going out and searching for that. I think that's my time. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. I hope you'll come back in a year or so and update us on what the JWST has accomplished. We look forward to that, and it really is amazing. I mean, I'm one of those folks who grew up thinking that the Hail Telescope was the be-all and the end-all, and it really, it was for about 30 years, and now look where we've got from here, just amazing. So we're going to take a break. Right now it's 25 to nine, so let's come back 10 minutes, 15 minutes? 15 minutes, we'll come back at 10 to nine, and we'll continue with the tribute to Mike Noble. Thank you very much. We're going to get going. So as many of you may know, a longtime member of our society passed away in October, Mike Noble. And so we have some speakers tonight who are going to speak about him and speak about his life and his contributions to the center. So I'd like to call up, I think we'll get them all up here. I'm going to call up Alastair, Bruce, Frank, Mark, and Sherilyn, if you wouldn't mind all coming up. And I don't know if you've arranged amongst yourselves the order in which you're going to speak? I guess we could do it alphabetically.
Good evening. It's always, well, it's impossible to, well, explain someone's life in a few brief minutes, especially someone as remarkable as Mike Noble. We're going to split things up a little bit between, between the four of us, five of us, and we'll cover a little bit of different parts of Mike that we got to know. There'll be some overlaps, and if there's some gaps, well, I hope we can fill some of them in. But there are other parts of Mike that we won't be talking about here, other than he was a very keen supporter of the U of A panda volleyball, and by very keen, in exactly the same passionate way that he was passionate about astronomy. Also, he did model railroading, but with, you know, and try and picture being able to do that all at the same time as he did with astronomy. So here we have, oh, sorry, we need to share. The Mike was involved in astronomy before I got to the center in 1987. And so he was always a fixture, and the amount of emphasis he put in and focus, as you'll be hearing, is truly remarkable as to what he did. I'll be talking a little bit about the meteorite hunting that the two of us did, and as well to talk about the aurora. Well, we'll let the images do the talking about the aurora. Well, as Frank settles in here, some of you will know that Mike was earlier on trained as someone who could do a lot of surveying. So he's a surveyor and so very big on precision in surveying. And that will come into play in just a moment. The part that I'm going to share with you is our meteorite searching. And it all started, well, actually, well before this particular event, but when we really got into it, and I got to know Mike a lot more, it was just after the Camrose Fireball of 2019, was it? And September 1st. And Mike was in the middle of recording aurora video, as you can see in the lower left, and the start, he caught the start of the fireball as it came through. And of course, the exposure ended on one of his cameras, but Mike was recording, he had two cameras running to record half the sky, and his second camera caught the fireball as it was getting a lot brighter. And then the next frame, oof, daylight. And that's one of the things that tells you, there's a good optimism to find a meteorite if the sky goes blue and the ground goes white when a meteorite happens. So we were all really optimistic about this one, and the fact that it landed over the Camrose area is, it was just amazing, because if it's over the bush or the mountains, you're not going to find anything, but here it is over open farmland. So away we went, and here's Mike chatting, among others, Murray Paulson, also a keen meteorite searcher. And here we were talking with the landowners and had samples of meteorites as to what they might look like. And here we go, surveying and walking, and it was after harvest for much of our time. And we walked and we walked, and Mike was always keeping tabs on where we were, and the stalks from the plants were rather spiky. So Mike is very proud of the lashings that he took from the harvested stuff there. But he always went at it with verve, and just like, oh, 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 this is kind of what we're looking for, but these are not meteorites. So as you can see, in just about every picture of Mike that we have, there's a panda's volleyball sweatshirt that he was wearing. As mentioned, he's a very keen pandas person. And here's the precision stuff. It's like, oh, you know, one GPS isn't good enough, or we have two, and if we have two, then we need to compare them. And there's our U of A pandas again here. And it was pretty amazing that with all that time out there, I basically walked 100 kilometers with Mike over the course of a couple of months. And it was during earlier outings that I learned of his love of the music of Tangerine Dream, something that I really appreciate as well. And so with that, and his love of Aurora, we're going to switch into a video that, well, I made, but I used all of Mike's, he had three cameras by then, and to do a whole sky Aurora. And so I've stitched those images together into one big Aurora video that we'll see projected onto the dome. I'm not sure how that's going to come out on the. I'm not sure how that's gonna come out on the Zoom, but here we go with some of the music of Tangerine Dream, highly edited, to, again, one song being 20 minutes and collapsing it down. Okay, here we go. Here we come into daylight. We could switch back to the start. One of the frames of the video, you might have seen Mike interview, and I kind of love this picture with him hands up there thinking, is this all you can do? Come on, I know you got something in there. And of course, you know, yep, this is more like it. So I'm very much looking forward to my next night out under a big aurora. And I'm pretty sure I'll see Mike up there as rambunctious as he always was, bumping around, trying to get the geomagnetic storm levels up just that bit higher for us.
And that was part of RASC, I think already a life member when I joined in 1985, and a constant among us. It's over, I know, nearly 40 years, and the club had the great pleasure of meeting a number of, let's say, unique individuals. And Mike Noble was definitely one of those. He had a very exceptional memory. You remembered an extraordinary level of detail from his multiple night sky sessions. He could put a date, a time, a number of photographs he took in each of his cameras, and just right off the top of his head. But more what I'll remember Mike for is his generosity, some of which showed through to those of us who worked at the observatory. He did a number of things behind the scenes, solved some technical problems, did a bunch of grunt work, shoveling, that sort of thing. Frank, you'll probably mention that in more detail. I was personally recipient of his generosity on more than one occasion. When he bought new camera equipment, he gifted me with his old one at one point, which included a camera body, multiple lenses, accessories, even the camera bag that they came in, really a starter kit to enable me to get involved in astroimaging, at least in my own fashion. And after the first of those, that's where this picture comes from. Another generous person in my life is my wife, Anna, who made this quilt for Mike that we gave him at Runway 29 after a meeting one night, and she called it "Starry, Starry Night", made for Mike Noble with "Thanks for your generosity and friendship" from me, and hand-pasted and quilted by her, and he was absolutely thrilled to receive that, because he, I'm sure, was just expecting to pass it on. But what he said to me, "If I'm not gonna use it anymore, I don't want it gathering dust. I want it in the hands of someone who will use it", and he wouldn't even think about selling stuff, he just gifted. And that's what Mike did, and Mike was gifted. Alistair touched on his dedication to his areas of interest, which included windsurfing, model railroading, pandas volleyball. I can't remember the last time I saw him wearing a shirt that didn't reference that, and I'm wearing my one green and gold astronomy shirt tonight in tribute. Of course, Tangerine Dream, and especially astronomy and astrophotography. And those interests became seemingly ever more focused after his remarkable recovery from brain cancer in 2014. My understanding was he was given one to two years at that point, and he made it for another eight. And he made the most of those years, and amazed some of us with his feats. He literally drove tens of thousands of kilometers in search of clear skies and in pursuit of the near sky, knocked loose in clouds, meteors, aurora. And his interest was in capturing with his camera the night sky right down to the horizon. Mike had a big database of dozens, if not hundreds, of different locations scattered around the province of places where he could set up away from the lights. And generally, those places didn't necessarily have a picturesque foreground for, you know, a nice photograph. His idea was to get the entire sky right down to the horizon. His interest was what was up in the sky. And for example, that fireball picture he showed, Alistair showed earlier, where he had two cameras going, one facing northwest and one facing northeast, and they caught the beginning of the event, but not the whole event. So that inspired him for a new project, where he would say proudly, "I want to capture the entire night sky", meaning every square degree of the sky for every second of the night. So what he wound up doing was setting up two, he bought six new cameras with six identical lenses, built a triangular equal, a equilateral triangle at 120-degree angles, and mounted two cameras facing in each of the three directions. And with the help of longtime rascal Robert Rolfe, he built up a timing mechanism that would turn one trio of cameras on and the other trio off, two seconds on, two seconds off. So every four seconds, Mike's cameras would capture six photographs. That's 90 per minute. Neither the math of how many there would be over the course of a night, a lot, in the five figures of cameras. And that was, that was his kind of achievement. It's very unfortunate that he really only got to use that array for a relatively short period near the very end of his life. And I had occasion to meet up with him at various locations for meteor showers, maybe knocked loose in cloud. It would be at a gravel pit somewhere, or some side road off the beaten path. And one particularly memorable one in 2019, three years ago this month, when Mike and Alistair and I all headed out east to try and observe the predicted outburst of the monosarated meteor shower. It turns out that we were, in fact, in pursuit of unicorns, but I saw one, and I photographed one, and that was about as good as I think we got. We got the few. 2,000-kilometer round trip in 24 hours. We went all the way to Wapella, Saskatchewan, and back. And it was, it was, it was a road trip. It was delightful in its way, listening to Tangerine Dream on loop as we headed out, and I will bear that as one of my many fond memories of Mike Noble. Thank you.
We're really going to miss Mike, the RASC and all his friends, for his new friends and his friends that are decades old. I wrote a short piece for Mike here. What to say about a fellow observer who has suddenly gone into the mystery of significance and insignificance? From a presence and a predictability to the depths of memory to rest. Mike Noble, a faraway voice at a dark site, the guy who was already set up when you arrived. A faithful admirer of the Aurora and not-tallusent clouds. The most valuable things I learned from Mike were the following. At the observatory, small repairs are not only necessary, but can make a big difference in the comfort and delivery for staff, programs, and volunteers. Mike would assess a problem, take a few measurements, and give me an approximate timeline for completion of a small project. Then he would appear one day on time with the completed project and just install it. If I wasn't there, no mention was made of it, it was just done. Some examples were with solar astronomy, he made shades for the Lunt 152-millimeter scope. We, of course, had a lot of trouble working four hours in the sun with some instruments that didn't always track properly, and we'd always be peering into the sun. So he made shields for our solar equipment, and he even, this summer, after the pandemic, came out, and he made a great big foam core cabinet so that our new laptop and our new camera equipment for imaging the sun would be shaded and protected. Mike would keep everything under control on the many, many afternoons that I was alone at the deck for four and a half hours and needed a short break in the Science Center. He also helped to pull the roof, that was very important, until in 2008, we got a winch, and then we could do it ourselves. As a photographer, Mike liked to keep things clean and shipshape, and always got right in there to help us in our dusty, windy, grimy observatory. I remember finding out many years ago from Mike that you could just use a level on the peer-mounted telescopes to get the declination degrees if you had the right ascension or a good idea of it, and you were hunting down a daytime star, or a ghostly Jupiter, or a hazy-day Venus. These have always been our challenges for us on the afternoon shifts. Whenever there was a question from the public about not-tallusent clouds or Aurora, I delightedly referred visitors to Mike, who was a living encyclopedia of detail on these subjects. Mike set an example about volunteering. He wasn't always able to sign up for a shift, and especially at night, he was usually off to the gravel pit or wherever there was a sucker hole in the sky to observe, and so he wasn't always there at closing time, much to my dismay. He set an example to follow in that he was just there. He appeared almost every shift, and he talked to the public for a while, he fixed some equipment. He threatened to get a big towel and wipe off the end of the 16-inch meat and that sort of thing. But he was just really there wherever he could be, and often in the background. I like to think of Mike Noble as not just any pillar of our astronomical community. Whenever I will see a brilliant, steady auroral pillar when admiring or charting the northern lights from a dark site, I'll say to myself or another astronomer, "Hey, there's Mike." Mike's last task at the observatory for the summer, according to him, was to be replacing his much-admired Comet Hale-Bopp photo, framed photo, that is above our desk at the observatory. And I don't think he had a chance to do that, and I hope someone might enable that to be done. I'm sure, or I'm almost sure that he probably has another copy somewhere, and he was just going to put it in the frame, and the color had faded from it in the sun at the observatory. Although most of what I learned from Mike was very practical, it was balanced by his captivation with the ethereal, the beautiful, and the surprising. Aurora, not-tallusent clouds, comets. Mike was truly passionate about the natural art of the night sky and one of its best students. Thank you, Mike.
Here's a photograph, one of thousands that Mike Noble has taken of knocked-loose-in-clouds. So the knocked-loose-in-clouds are the light-blue-colored ones that are above the dark-colored, or the dark tropospheric clouds. So I don't have the date for this particular one, but I think it was a display approaching dawn. And here's a picture of Mike holding another one of his NLC photographs. The photo was given away as a door prize at one of the two astro cafes that Mike and I hosted at the Namao Community Hall in 2016 and 2017. And there he is with the panda shirt again. In 1985, a British painter, Robert Leslie, penned a paragraph and sent it to the esteemed research journal Nature, which promptly published it. The passage was about an observation of the newly-discovered phenomenon of knocked-loose-in-clouds, or NLC, a summertime cloud forming in the Earth's mesosphere and lit by the sun in twilight. For the last 137 years, it has been visual monitoring of NLC by amateur observers like Leslie, who has been at the forefront of NLC research. It has become apparent early on that, not surprisingly, the more time one scans the twilight skies, the more nights during the three-month season the NLC could be seen. Most of us are conned on just checking the sky from home and resigning ourselves to the suppressing effect of weather. We know that on an overcast night in late June, there's a good chance that there are NLC beyond those straticumulus. We know also that approaching dawn on a clear, early-July night, there's a good chance that NLC are awaiting us, but there is something called sleep. It's kind of necessary. Mike Noble, who retired in 2012, was right for a compelling science project, and he chose NLC. In 1988, I had started the NLC Can-Am Surveillance Network to collect and analyze NLC sightings, and I welcome Mike's efforts. And what efforts? Mike's mission was to counteract the prohibitive effect of weather by driving out of the city, if it was cloudy here, and find holes in tropospheric cloud, holes through which NLC could be seen. And then through, much of the night as possible, set up multiple And then through much of the night as possible, set up multiple cameras to try to catch the faint N L C. Mike continued this rigorous program for 11 seasons, 2012 to 22 to 2022. Whereas fervent N L C observers would get maybe 10 or 20 active nights per season on average, Mike's efforts consistently yielded totals in the 30s and 40s. He proved how many N L C could really be seen if you tried. No one else ever tried it and maybe no one else ever will. It's not easy to stay up at night for 90 nights, driving during most of them. It, it would cost lots for gas to start off with. Mike would sometimes drive 100 to 200 kilometers to get clear skies, occasionally sight hopping in the process. All the while, he would report on his progress in real time on the Astro Chat. Indeed, we became familiar with such expressions as "evidence of N L C", "of our B N L C to the north", or simply, "there's a display. Now go out and observe." And it's not that safe to drive at night, of course. Animals lurk in the adjacent bushes. People, including tired, drunk or distracted ones, lurk on the, on the roads themselves. The vehicle can break down in darkness. And yet Mike's only incident in that decade was one flat tire. Once I asked Mike how stressful it was to be driving at night, peering out of the windows in the darkness to look for breaks in the cloud. I tried it way back in my meteor observing days, but quickly gave up. Mike's reply was that he had a procedure for that, as he did for anything. He said, "Come on, it's easy. You just have to go like this. It's as simple as that." So I guess the old one Mississippi, two Mississippi rule wouldn't work for that, for that time interval. So how about something like N L C? N L C. Anyways, when he showed me, I thought for a second that he was just kidding. But of course, this is Mike, so he was not kidding. Vintage Mike. Part of Mike's legacy will be the research papers and conference papers we co-wrote. In the future, N L C researchers now have an impressive trove of N L C images to peruse. All thanks to Mike. And on that note, thank you. And good night.
Thank you to all our presenters. Let's give them a big hand. Did you want to speak?
Um, you know, I think everyone said it quite well. Just, just one note, you know, Mike has been a friend of the Torsor of Science Edmonton, Science Center with R A S C. He's been here numerous times helping me out in the dome, getting things ready, helping me at the observatory and everybody else that worked at the observatory. As, as was pointed out, he always had that, "It's easy." That's what always comes to mind. I asked him a question, you know, "How do you do this, Mike?" And, "Oh, it's easy." So I'll always remember that every time I look at something and think that it might be difficult to do this, I have to remember Mike's words to all of us, "It's easy." So we'll have to take a little, of course, with the first snowfall we had here, I just remember Mike being the first person at the observatory. I think, okay, I better go out now. And there was Mike there shoving the snow away from the roof deck and even with a tool for us, a big round wooden, kind of two by four with a bearing to the, on the far side that would help us rotate the snow around the roof. And he was up there. You know, let that snow come down, make sure that we could open up the observatory any plane that we had after that. And I'm going to miss that. In fact, with his first snowfall, it really kind of hit hard that Mike wasn't there to help me this time. So it's, we're going to miss Mike. He was a great guy for all of us and and wherever he is, we'll always be looking skyward to him. So again, thanks, Mike, for everything.
Yes, thanks, Mike, for everything. I'm going to miss his birdie presence. He always sat at the back in these meetings, you know, where the cool kids sit. And I'm also going to miss the email notification on my phone going off at three o'clock in the morning. I, I didn't have to, I didn't, it didn't have to know or question who it was that was emailing at three o'clock in the morning. I knew exactly who that was. I think members of Mike's family are tuning in tonight and I just want to say on behalf of all of us here at the R A S C Edmonton Center, our condolences to you. He was a great guy. We're going to miss him. He's part of our family as much as, in some ways, he is part of yours. So with that, I think we'll move on to the next part of the agenda. We're going to have Orla. That's right. Orla, you can come in and Orla's going to favor us with a song.
Thank you. I'm not actually going to sing here. I've been doing this since last November, so about a year. I've brought a a song on science or star tuned to the membership and I really appreciate presenting this music to a captive audience who actually understands some of the science in those songs. I remember when the first time I sang one of my songs to someone, I was up in Prince George's teaching. And my wife and I went over for dinner at one of my wife's friends and brought my guitar and I thought, oh, I'm going to sing one of my songs. I don't remember which one it was, but I strummed a few chords and started singing and then she started laughing. And it wasn't funny. I mean, it was supposed to be a serious song. Anyways, so over the years, probably starting in 1980s, I started playing the guitar and I thought I'd do something unique and I created a number of songs in science and I'm going to bring you one tonight that I wrote in 2009 and the song is about Galileo. So I'll just start and I guess. Galileo dropped a cannonball. Galileo was a space probe that studied the planet Jupiter and its moons. It was named after the 14th and 15th century Italian scientist Galileo Galilei. This Jupiter orbiter probe, shown in the slide, was launched on October 18th, 1989 and arrived at Jupiter on December 7th, 1995, just 385 years after Galileo first observed Jupiter through one of his homemade telescopes. During the International Year of Astronomy in 2009, the world celebrated Galileo's first observations of the moon 400 years prior on November 30th, 1609, which is now 413 years ago. In addition to observing the lunar surface and the moons of Jupiter with his telescope, he also observed the phases of Venus, the rings of Saturn and sunspots. As well, his telescope resolved the Milky Way into a myriad of stars. The image on this slide shows two of Galileo's first telescopes on display in the Galileo Museum in Florence. Although Galileo did not invent the telescope, he made considerable improvements to the instrument based only on the somewhat vague description of the first practical telescope constructed by Hans Lippershey in 1608. In the following year, Galileo made a telescope with about three times magnification and he later made improved versions with up to 30 times magnification. The Galileo scope is one of the cornerstone projects of the International Year of Astronomy. The kit was developed by leading astronomers, optical engineers and science educators to showcase the type of instrument Galileo used to make his discoveries. Here we see Galileo's drawing of the moon showing its surface marred by craters and mountains. It was not the perfect, unblemished sphere as proposed by Aristotle. In 1613, Galileo published a discussion on sunspots showing that the sun was also not a perfect, unblemished sphere. And in October of 1610, Galileo made his first telescopic observations of Venus. The top of the slide is a simulation showing how the faces of Venus would have looked through his telescope. These observations supported the Copernican heliocentric model of the solar system rather than the Pitomaniac geocentric model. Here we see a sketch from 1610 that Galileo made of the changing positions of the moons of Jupiter. It became apparent that the Earth was not the only center of rotation as believed by Aristotle and the Catholic Church. And this image depicts Galileo explaining the topography of the moon as well as the motion of the moons of Jupiter to two cardinals. The Catholic Church ultimately found Galileo gravely suspect of heresy for supporting the ridiculous idea that the Earth revolved around the sun and subsequently sentenced him to house arrest for the remainder of his life. Galileo not only made contributions to astronomy, he also made significant contributions to physics. They include the principle of the simple pendulum, the study of motion and Newton's first law, definition of acceleration, the constancy of gravitational acceleration of falling bodies and Galilean relativity. One of his more famous discoveries was the law of falling bodies, which states that objects, regardless of their mass, fall to the ground in the same amount of time when dropped from the same height. It is told that he performed this experiment from the Leaning Tower of Pisa by dropping two objects of different mass from its top, perhaps a cannonball and a rock. I wrote the following song in 2009 during the International Year of Astronomy to celebrate the scientific achievements of Galileo.
Okay. Well, how wonderful that we can see in one evening Galileo's scope and the James Webb Space Telescope. I think that's pretty cool. Okay, so we're going to, I'm going to ask Mark Zalchik to come up and give us a book report.
Hi, Ian. The Kimball Library is located just at the entrance to get into the Star Theater. It's open before and after the meetings. Today's Book of the Month is an example of one that was suggested by a RASK member. Yeah, anyone's welcome to do that. If you see a book that you'd like to read, just pass the title along and we'll buy the book and then you can have first dibs at it. Now, the book this month was recommended by Robert. Is Robert here tonight to have first dibs on this book? Robert, Robert? Anyone named Robert? Yeah, I guess he'll have to have second dibs. Anyways, the, the book this month is is similar to last month's book, which was on Jupiter, but this one's on the next planet out, which is hell yeah. Specifically, it's moon Enceladus. The book is called Enceladus and the icy moons of Saturn. Yeah, specifically on Enceladus. That particular moon has geyser-like jets emanating from its surface and a subsurface ocean that may contain the ingredients of life. The book actually contains research papers from various authors with data from the Cassini probe. And highlight of the book is the color plate section, which includes detailed global maps, satellite maps of the moons Enceladus, Memus, Tethys, Deion, Rhea and the Jekyll and Hyde surface of Iaipetus. So the book's available immediately after the meeting unless Robert comes and tackles me first. So yeah, it's available to members who can take it out for a month or two. It's great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, I think we're ready to proceed to Astro Imaging Corner with Abdur.
Thanks, Tom. Okay. Perfect. So yeah, hopefully everyone can see my screen. And if the audio isn't clear, just let me know and I'll turn off my microphone.
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Okay. Thank you. Okay. And still showing okay. Just maximize my screen. Just want to make sure. Perfect. Okay. So this was the first image over here. This was from Dave Mussel of the California Nebula. And again, this was with a five inch refractor reduced to 666 millimeters. And this nebula is in the constellation Perseus and lies about a thousand light years away from Earth. And its brightness is mostly due to the excitation of rarefied hydrogen gas by the bright star Menkib, located just off the edge of this frame below into the right. And the nebula itself is large and faint, but you, but can be seen with a wide field telescope or binoculars under the darkest skies. And Dave says that a rewarding visual and photographic target, it can be found in a location roughly halfway between Mirafak, the the brightest star in Perseus, and the Pleiades in fall and winter skies. So thanks, Dave. And the next image also from Dave is the Gamma Signi Nebula. And this is also known as the Butterfly Nebula, IC 1318. It's located in the center of Cygnus, the Swan. And the actual nebula extends well beyond the edges of this frame and is part of the complex of various bright and dark nebulae that include the Crescent, North America, Pelican, and Eastern and Western Veil Nebulae. And Dave says that the image was compiled from roughly 360 images gathered over several nights in October and taken through the same X-Force Scientific 127 millimeter refractor and a QHY 268M camera. And the scope was reduced from F 7.5 to F 5.2. And the calibrating, stacking, and processing was all done in Pixen Sight. And noise reduction was added in Topaz D Noise AI. So another phenomenal image, Dave. And the next image comes from someone who is a recent member of the R E S C. And this is the first time that Craig is submitting an image to us. So thank you for that, Craig. This is the Iris Nebula. And this was taken in October of this year by Craig. And this was a total of 12 hours and 45 minutes of exposure time with a Sky Watcher 120 ED and the ESI 2600 MC camera. So great job. I'm hoping to see a lot more of your shots in the future as well. And up next, we have the Wizard Nebula from Ray. And this is a total of 60 exposures of 240 seconds each captured through the QHY 268C camera. And the scope used was the William Optics 132 Apo on a Ioptron SIM60. And this was stacked and processed in Lightroom. And up next, we have the Californian Nebula also from Ray. And this is a total of nine five-minute exposures taken at Blackfoot about two weeks ago. And this was captured with the QHY 367 full-frame camera on a, on an Ascar 300 millimeter refractor and processed in APP and Lightroom. So a great shot. And the last one from Ray is the Heart and Soul Nebula. And this was taken again with the Ascar 300 millimeter and the QHY 367 full-frame camera and processed again in APP and Lightroom. And this is a total of 15 exposures of 240 seconds each and taken at the Northern Prairie Star Party. And up next, we have an image from Arnold. This is the sun in calcium wavelengths. And Arnold took this in support of the R E S C EC's collaboration with NASA ESO and AAVSO Solar Orbiter Observing Campaign. And Arnold began imaging the sun in single ionized calcium line, that's 393.37 nanometers, as part of his contribution to this effort. And this one was imaged with the William Optics Gran Turismo 71, that's the GT 71 Apo, and a Long B 1800 Calcium K module. And this was captured fairly recently during above-average seeing. And Arnold says that, or quoting the book Solar Astronomy: Observing, Imaging, and Studying the Sun, Calcium K line is, lies in the darkest absorption lines in the visible light region of the solar spectrum. And they lie at the transition between violet and ultraviolet light, where the human eye's sensitivity rapidly drops, making visual observations very difficult. And the images observed in the calcium line correspond to a layer of the solar chromosphere between 500 and 2,000 kilometers in height. So very nice detail there, Arnold. And the next image here is one of my recent ones from the November Total Lunar Eclipse. So this was with my Fuji XS10 mirrorless camera and a 50 to 230 millimeter kit lens at 230 millimeters. And this was a stack of four-second exposures at ISO 400 and F 6.7. And I was tracking using the Astro Track during that time. But there was a, I didn't polar align very well because it was so cold outside. So there was some drift, but that worked out well. And the next image is another one of mine. This is the Crescent Nebula that I'd been working on recently. And the Crescent Nebula is about 5,000 light years away from the Earth. And it was created when the fast-moving stellar wind from that bright star right in the center of the nebula collided with slower-moving material that was ejected by the star a few hundred thousand years earlier. And this was with my C11 AGHD and the Hyperstar V3. And for the camera, I was using my ESI 1600 MM camera with a ZWO electronic filter wheel. And I was using the Astronomic Max F R filters and my EQ6R Pro mount. And this was a total of 21 hours of, or almost 22 hours of exposures through RGB, HJ, and O3 filters. And the last image of the night is my image of the Triangulum Galaxy. And this particular galaxy is the third largest member of our local group of galaxies after the Milky Way and Andromeda. And the star-forming regions here, which are visible as those red regions, they're very much like our own Orion Nebula. And this galaxy is about 3 million light years away. And one interesting fact I found out about this galaxy while imaging it is that the rate of star formation in this galaxy is about 10 times higher than the corresponding regions in the Andromeda Galaxy, which is why you see so many bright nebulae. And there are so many hydrogen alpha regions. So it's quite, quite a beautiful galaxy. And in total, I took 25 hours of exposures through the C11 AGHD and the ESI 1600 MM for this. And the vast majority of them was for the hydrogen alpha. And I'd gotten the, the RGB data for the galaxy itself from the Northern Prairie Star Party when we were set up there. So that's all we've got for tonight. So a huge thank you to everyone who submitted their images. And I hope to see a lot more next time. So back to you, Tom.
Thank you, Abdur. And I do want to say that, I mean, it's, it's really great that all the astro imagers in our community are, we're all pushing each other to be better. I want to encourage, if you're just starting out in astro imaging, submit your images to Abdur. This is for members. And we all want to see what you're doing. We all want to give you that kind of positive impact. And we want you to, to display your images for all of us to enjoy, whether you're just starting out or you're, you're just progressing. And I think it'll be, it would be really great to see more astro imaging from people who are just starting out. So with that, this has been a great evening. I want to thank you all for coming. I hope that some of us in Zoom land, oh. Oh, sure.
Thanks, Tom. It's been suggested to me that in honor and memory of Mike Noble, that we revive an old tradition and assemble at Runway 29 after the meeting. It's still located at 11312 109th Street, west side of 109th Street, between Kingsway and Princess Elizabeth Avenue, easy to get to, upper floor. And they're open until 3 AM. So we're good to go.
Thanks very much. And, Mark?
One more bit of silliness. The next month at our meeting, we'll have just missed the opposition of the planet Mars. And so I thought that I would mention this. I have a lunar meteorite and a Martian meteorite, because at the time of opposition, the moon and Mars are going to meet in the sky. So I thought it would be appropriate to bring two meteorites down. So anybody that would like to hold a piece of the moon in their hands, or a piece of Mars, I'll be over by the refreshment table at the end of the eve.
Yeah, if I need to add one more thing to that, we plan on actually having the observatory open on December 7th here for the opposition of Mars. And that's a look at the occultation of Mars with the moon. So if you are, I think the occultation's around 12 or 18 to 19, something like that. So for those of you, I would like to the observatory, look at Mars.
You see what you're missing Zoom land when you don't come in person? And I do have actually one announcement, which is we are going through our budgeting process for next year. So if you have something that you would like to have a project, something that you would like to submit and perhaps get some financing for, please submit it. You can submit it to, to me, or you can submit it to Florin at the treasurer. We're going to be having our executive committee meeting next Monday. And that's when we're going to be putting our budget together. So please get them in before then. Well, as I was saying, I want to thank our guest speaker. I want to thank all the presenters tonight. And we look forward to seeing even more of you in, in person at our next meeting. So clear skies, everyone.